Let's go ahead and get started with our work session for today. Post order, thank those who are here, and I will turn it over to Al, and then you will turn it over to others as appropriate.
Yes. Today, we are going to do a deeper dive into the animal shelter and animal control reorganization proposal summary. Obviously, our main goal is to provide the very best service we can to our county residents who we believe deserve the very best, and we believe that significant improvements can be made to do just that. So, I'm going to run through a short PowerPoint, and then I'm going to turn it over to the sheriff, who has a few additional comments, and then also to Linda, who will do a brief overview of the two ordinances that are proposed. So, let's get rolling. So, the goal, position animal control in the animal shelter for optimal performance in service of the community, and then also to increase safety for the public, our animal control officers and the animals, improving connections to the criminal justice system, and public safety expertise and resources, training, but also positioning in the criminal justice system, we think is very important as well. Focus the shelter on in-shelter animal care, and then the health department, of course, has always, always, a full plate of public health priorities that they need to deal with for human beings, so basically allow them to focus even more intently on that. Okay, I violated every rule of PowerPoint with this slide, but I'm the kind of person that loves to take a look at how things came about, the history of things, but in 1940, Kent County assumed responsibility for the dog pound from the city of Grand Rapids. In 1978, the Kent County Board of Commissioners adopted an animal control ordinance, and this basically set forth general regulations relating to animals, provided for an animal shelter, a public spay and neuter clinic, and for control and impounding of animals, licensing of dogs, et cetera. 1980, so I'm thinking, okay, they made the switch to the health department, there must have been some major study or some major change in thinking around the state that suggested that it was a better method to do it through the health department than to do it through an animal control, health department, and the public health code regulations, rather than the sheriff and animal control law. So yesterday, I gave Dave Cracker a call. Dave was the environmental health director here, longtime county employee, lives in Ottawa, he's on one of the boards there. And I said, "How'd this come about, Dave?", because he worked for the county then. He said, "Well, the state started providing some revenue to counties that provided animal control through the public health code that wasn't available if the sheriff was running it through an animal control ordinance." And so the county changed over to get that additional revenue, and then a few years later, the state stopped that program. And so we've been doing it really for 50 years for that reason, and that reason hasn't existed for now most of those years. So, I just wanted to say there wasn't really some compelling scientific reason or to do it that way. So that was in 1980. 1982, the Kent County Board then repealed the animal control ordinance because it was duplicative with many of the Kent County public health regulations found in the public health code. And then once again, in 2000, animal control regulations were revised, and then, of course, that brings us to today where we're proposing that the board go back to the method you had prior, you know, to 1980, and have a county animal control ordinance that's enforced through the sheriff's office. So, we just put together just a little bit of data, so you could paint a little bit more of a picture around animal control in Kent County. So calls for service in 2021, 5,641. We've got 11,508 licensed dogs, and it's estimated that that might be maybe 25% of the dogs in the county. About 40 to 60% is the estimate of households that own dogs. Currently, our shelter population is 57, and we have 23 available for adoption, and the remainder are on stray hold, court hold, or quarantine. Okay, I just, hold on a sec. I realized that Mandy had wanted to listen in on self, so I'm going to add her real quick here.
So Al, can you dial and talk at the same time?
Uh...
Just asking.
No, I can't, okay?
Never mind.
Darn it, you had to point that out, too. Okay, so I'm just going to lay this phone down, and then if Mandy joins us, she can hear. All right. So, so we have average length of dogs at the shelters, 11 days. So I know we hear about those cases like Rusty, who was with us about 400 days or something like that, who, by the way, has been successfully adopted out. But really, the average is only 11 days, and I thought, I was surprised when I saw that after talking to a lot of people and hearing a lot of comments. So the strategy, make the animal shelter a standalone department that would vote, that would report up through the administrator to the board, that's how that structure would work. Move the animal control function from the health department to the sheriff's office. Also enact municipal civil infraction ordinance and the Kent County Animal Control Ordinance. So, the cities really jumped on the law that was adopted in the early 90s that allowed city and county governments and township governments to adopt municipal civil infraction ordinances that basically decriminalized things like having grass that was too long or a junk car in your yard, and basically put in a process where you might get a warning and a $50 fine with the first one, a warning and maybe a $250 fine with the second, warning and 500 with the third, depending how that would be set up. And then the fourth one, you would get a misdemeanor. So really, the effort was to decriminalize a lot of very minor type things. This is one that we adopted in Ottawa, my first full year there, and other counties and cities, mainly cities across the state have done this heavily. Fewer counties by percentage, I think, but still a significant number have, and it's a, Linda will describe all this later, but that is one of the recommendations. And then we're also researching the possibility of more, we have a lot of volunteers, we have a really good volunteer organizer, but we think there may, it may be good to provide more structure and maybe create like a Friends of the Kent County Animal Shelter group to formalize some of that. So we are digging into that and researching that. And then also looking at the possibility of creating an animal shel, Kent County Animal Shelter Foundation, looking to some of our nonprofit, private, and governmental leaders to work with us to, you know, create a foundation that could help fund the animal shelter needs into the future. Similar to what we did when we created the Parks Foundation 20 years ago. The current structure, I won't dwell on this a lot, but it's a service division of the health department. The animal shelter division director reports to one of the deputy administrative health officers. There was a layer reduced in that a couple years ago. Animal control operates within the animal shelter organization currently. The new organizational structure would again be the animal shelter as a standalone department, and animal control would go over to the sheriff. So focusing the animal shelter more intently, raise the awareness and importance of the animal shelter within county government and in the community, enhance operations by focusing on best practices, policy, and emerging issues, and create more community, positive community engagement through new support organizations. So, and again, I'm not going to dwell on this because the sheriff can talk about this better than than I, but certainly as I reviewed the situation, and just let me say, when I, before I arrived, I got a list of all the positions the county was looking to add. These three positions are on that list. I basically said, "I would like to study it first and see if I agree that that's the best alternative for Kent County, and, but, let's put the money in the budget." So the money went into contingency. So we have the money in the budget, it just wasn't for these three specific positions. It was set aside in the event we got to the point where we wanted to recommend what we're recommending today. So, basically, we think that definitely there's room for improved training, investigation, and enforcement expertise. We think that there'll be better safety and protection. The new positions will actually help create a 24/7, stronger, more consistent network for assistance if animal controls need help, animal control officers need help. So, again, I think the sheriff will do a more thorough and better job than me answering those questions. Just wanted to look to, and when you look around the state, the number of counties that actually do this through the health department's rather small. It's interesting when you look at Wayne, they actually contract with the city of Detroit, who does it through their health department. Detroit and Holland were the last two city health departments in the state, and now it's basically Detroit functionally. I think the one in Holland is technically there, but it contracts with Ottawa, and Detroit City still has its own health department, and they do Wayne's animal enforcement through that unit. So implementing the proposal, just, you know, there was some talk about, is this a power shift from the board and administration to the sheriff? I would say it's not a power shift, because ultimately, the Board of Commissioners retains the power to decide how you're going to do this. I mean, you have three options, and if you don't like how this works, you could ultimately say, "No, we loved it when the health department did it, we're going back there." Or you could say, "We're going to do a complete standalone that has enforcement and the shelter under one roof." Or you could keep it the way it is, but that's a board power to make that decision. What you're doing is switching the authority over animal control from the health department to the sheriff. So it's not a power switch as much as an authority switch. The Board of Commissioners would approve the new position request if you agree with the recommendation, and then, of course, the day-to-day management at a date certain would would transfer over to the sheriff, and then the animal shelter director would continue to manage the animal shelter. So, basically, this shows, you know, some of the costs, 2022 costs, so the net new cost is, and there's all kinds of things going on here, because there's an operational cost of over 500,000 that goes from the health department to the sheriff. And then you've got new vehicle purchases that impact one year, and then there will be some ongoing charge, you know, to maintain those and that sort of thing. And then you've got the new positions that are, with a six-month cost right now, but then will be a 12-month cost next year. So, the way I'm looking at it, it's about 411,000, a little more than that as far as the net new cost to do this. The other thing I would, I would just suggest that you think about, though, I think we could have been doing a much better job of this for years, and so we can say this is a new cost, or we could say it's a cost we avoided by not maybe managing this optimally in the past. So, to me, I don't consider it to be necessarily a net new cost in that we're going to do it right, and we're going to do it better. So that would be how I think about that. Implementing the proposal, so ordinances, we would need to go back to an animal control ordinance, which remember, we got rid of back in, what, 1980 or whatever that was, which establishes the obligations of animal owners and the potential civil penalties for violating those obligations, similar to and replaces in the health department animal control regulations. So, basically, just switching back to what we switched to that 50 years ago. The Board of Commissioners enacts a municipal civil infraction ordinance, which establishes a fine and cost schedule for civil infraction citations, and then criminal enforcement through the sheriff's office would remain available if the severity of a situation called for criminal charges and prosecution. So county ordinance can't apply where a township, city, or village has enacted its own standalone animal ordinance. I think what you'll find, as I've talked to local units, I know the sheriff can really inform you better on this, I think they'll see this as a positive. It's not a competitive thing. I think something like 52% of the animal control calls that the sheriff does, because remember, the sheriff already has the power or authority to write citations under state law. So not local, not county, but under state law, which is different, again. But I think over half of those are in Grand Rapids and Wyoming or something, she can clarify more of that. And so the animal control officers will be able to write the civil infraction tickets, and the sheriff's office can enforce under the criminal statutes. Animal control officers will remain civilians, they won't have arrest powers, they will respond to most incidents and request backup from deputies as needed, and again, by having the right supervision 24/7, that backup will be available, I think, quicker in the event that it's needed. So again, we talked briefly about, you know, a foundation, maybe a nonprofit, you know, a Friends group might be a nonprofit group that can really help not only with walking dogs and cleaning areas and all that, but maybe with marketing, maybe with some other things. So many people have a passion for animals and the ability to use whatever their unique skill set is to help out. I don't even think we've imagined yet what some of those things could be, but we think that'd be a real positive. And then ultimately, you know, just the idea that people are very passionate, it's an area where they want to have an impact. So I think it's important to create a place where they can also provide money, you know, to help, you know, create the margin of excellence. We do the best job we can to be efficient and effective with government funding, and then maybe if we had more of a private investment above that, then that creates what I would refer to as the margin of excellence, where we can go the next level in, when we create facilities, policies, services, that type of thing. So, basically, we're in the phase where the next steps would be to go to standing committee and board for approval of positions and ordinances. We finalize communication and transition plans, implement the transition plan after staffing plan is complete and ordinances become effective. And just a couple final notes I wanted to make. It's interesting to me that, so Washtenaw and Ottawa, the most liberal, so to say, the most conservative, so to say, both use this model, they both have the sheriff doing the enforcement work, and it works fine in either place. So I think it's just a good management operations thing and not necessarily, you know, political undertones, at least from my perspective. And then I would also just say that I personally have over 26 years of experience with this type of model, because both as a city manager and as a county administrator, and I think that it fits, it fits best as far as the kind of training, support that can, and link into the criminal justice system when complaints are of a severity to need to be reviewed by the prosecutor and acted on, and it allows the shelter to focus on being the very best shelter they can without having to manage both of those areas. So, what I'd like to do is have the sheriff come up next, and then Linda come up, and then open it up to Q and A. All three of us will stand up here and take questions at that point, if that's okay with everyone.
Yep, that's fine.
All right, very good. So, sheriff?
Good morning, everybody, and my presentation's a lot less formal, so I just really want to talk a little bit about the synergy that we think would indeed be there with operations under the sheriff's office. Over the last several years of my memory, we've been asked to take a look at the animal control model under the sheriff's office. Usually comes up when there's a pretty significant case, perhaps criminal in nature, that there might be some community displeasure with how it was handled, or perhaps where it ended up in the criminal justice system, and that really is probably the case in point that makes you look at where that enforcement needs to be. So, like specifically around that issue, our concept would be to really take your animal control unit as is, operate it 90% of the time, pretty similar to how it's operating. We might change the deployment model a little bit, just to kind of tweak where people are responding from and where they're responding to and how the hours are being managed, but largely leave that in place. But our thought would be to add two full-time law enforcement sergeants that would do a couple things. One, they manage, they train, they coach, they guide. And I'll just comment on that, whether it's the animal control officer or a deputy, when we deprive members of our community of their property or their safety or their freedom, we really have to make sure that we have the right reasons to do it, and we do it in a way that's within the law and that's sustainable. So this, these are things we take very, very seriously as a sheriff's office. A lot of our training has to do with what your authority is, when you use that authority, how you use that authority, and how it fits into the bigger criminal justice process. It takes years, really honestly, to guide deputies through these decision-making matrix. It's something that needs a lot of training, a lot of adjustment, and then assistance as they're applying it. I look at what an animal control officer has typically as a background as they're approaching these calls for service, the very first time, the second time, the 100th time, and it's over the first year, they have about 100 hours of training, and that is the footprint that is largely with that animal control officer for the duration of their career. A lot of that has to do with health and safety of an animal that they're taking control and management over. It really doesn't focus on the deprivation of property or freedom for an individual or, or safety issues really for them, for how do I be safe as I'm performing my work? So that is the very different thing that a animal control officer would receive under the sheriff's office as a focus, and then again, it's that daily supervision and coaching. It's walking beside somebody as they really get good at their work and have a resource to answer questions. But what else that law enforcement sergeant does is gives a resource for them to have when a case isn't civil anymore. This case is something that really needs more than a citation. They're there to take over the criminal investigation, bring in other resources, just as we would for any other criminal investigation. And this can get pretty tricky, and I know we do have deputies all over the county, and that works really well, but as Al alluded to, 48% of the calls that are happening for animal control are actually within the cities of Wyoming and Grand Rapids alone. And I don't have deputies in the cities of Wyoming and Grand Rapids on a day-to-day basis, so having additional resources available to respond to those areas will be imperative to assist that animal control officer. It would also be important to understand we are going to reach out to the cities to have their law enforcement officers come over and take over a case when it really doesn't have anything to do with animal control anymore, so there'd be a handoff. But, so those law enforcement officers, who are also sergeants, will work in tandem with animal control on a criminal investigation, prepare the case for the prosecutor's office, perhaps refer it over to detective bureau if it's something that needs a little further investigation, but it really begins that criminal process. Often, when we see gaps, and I say this, it seems like an obvious thing, but often an animal control officer will not be aware that they are in the middle of a criminal investigation until they're far enough into a criminal investigation that it screws up the criminal investigation. No fault of their own, they don't have that kind of training, so we need, we need to give them that training to be aware of, these are the things that we're going to look for to call that sergeant. That sergeant can come walk beside you, that sergeant can guide the process from there, and if it is indeed criminal, go the route that we need to, to make it a criminal prosecution. The other thing I think is really important is we have an 850-square-mile county. Managing the logistics of an 850-square-mile response area is cumbersome, and it's really beyond the scope of what a director in a shelter would be able to do without additional resources, even if you decide to leave it within the shelter for management. You really do need to have supervision that has the ability to go to where the person is to assist them. At some point, you have up to five people out there working in geographically diverse areas. If they need help, help from a instructional basis or an operational level, their, their backup is a long, long, long way away right now, the way you have it structured. Our intent would be to prepare all of our staff, sergeants, deputies, to be some assistants, and again, to truly prepare two sergeants to be operationally up to speed and able to guide and steer these officers. So I guess I really want to just stop on that point for a minute. Is it okay if they ask questions on that right now?
Sure.
Yeah, so, and, and so the animal control officers would remain civilian. They are not, I'm not planning to make them fully sworn officers. I'll give you a little caveat to that if they are under the sheriff's office, and we did have somebody who was already a fully sworn officer, there would be the ability for us to maintain their certification. That's something we would consider individually with an officer who was applying. That would be something that would be an attractive thing for a candidate who perhaps wanted to work up to a full-time law enforcement position. So I just want to add that, I don't, I wouldn't want you to think I was going back on that word if that were to ever happen. So I would consider holding that certification, but they would remain sworn as special deputies, but not, but not a fully authorized law enforcement officer. They would have equipment, it is not our intent to arm them, it is our intent to issue tasers, and their training would be specific to defensive mechanisms, defending their, their own safety, perhaps against an animal or perhaps against a person. So those would be our two, and I had that question a couple times. Does anybody have any questions about the authority of the officers or why we would have?
Questions? Yes, Christian Hennessey.
I would, you know, your, your officers are coming into this without prior training or experience in working with animals, so can you talk in more depth perhaps about how the training, the preparation will be for them, and then how that will carry over to the animal control officers who, say, have 100 hours right now?
So, and I'm going to introduce Lieutenant John Degroot for a second. Sergeant John Degroot, my mistake. He's like, "Thanks for the promotion in the battlefield," right?
Good morning.
It doesn't show up in your paycheck, though, unfortunately, so. John has done a lot of work preparing this material for your review, and I'm going to let him answer that specific question, first for the animal control officers and then for the sworn staff.
So like the sheriff said, the role of the sergeants will really be guiding the animal control officers in the criminal world. So, the animal control officers have that expertise, which the sergeants will gain as they work with them, but they're not so much to guide their day-to-day and how they deal with civil infraction-type animal complaints. It's more triaging these complaints as far as, is this appropriate for us to be taken? for us to be taken, is it a criminal case? Is this a safety issue that we're going to? And then specifically, when it does come to that criminal investigation, guiding that criminal investigation, making sure that the animal control officer has all the resources they need, the tools they need. Along the way, also gaining that, that experience in going through the same trainings that the animal control officers. Sergeants are coming into this without the specific animal control training, but they'll have years and years of criminal training.
Can you speak just a little closer to the microphone, will you? Thank you. You have a follow-up?
Well, you, you, you know, you, we've, we've have training people now within the department, and working on things like de-escalation techniques and things like that. Will our animal control officers be able to participate in those trainings as well?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, we have those already being scheduled, so that the animal control officers will go through a number of the same trainings that our new patrol deputies go through. De-escalation is one of those. There's going to be specific training on new equipment that they may have, new software, those types of things, because they'll switch over, you know, how their day-to-day goes with reporting. But they will receive a lot of that training that the deputies receive as well.
Just a partial list. First aid is part of it, AED deployment, de-escalation, implicit bias, and then there are a number of department-related issues that we'll, we'll send the officers through. So it's actually pretty extensive. It's like a three-full day, literally. Before I will take legal responsibility for staff, they have to have a specific set of training, or I can't swear them in, in good conscience. Because day one, that we take over as being management, I'm legally, personally responsible for their actions. So they're going to have a set of circumstances in place before we're willing to do that.
Yes, go ahead.
You, you mentioned, you know, the, the legal responsibilities you'll have. How much risk does this put upon you for adding in this whole new, you know, animals are unpredictable, adding in, and, you know, you're going to be taking in a broader area, including the cities. How much risk does this put for you, and how do you prepare for that?
You know, it's the same way we, we prepare, no matter what that risk is, training and supervision. It's key. That's key to doing the work that we do, training and supervision every single time. So obviously, every call for service introduces a risk. Being prepared for the right call of service, call for service with the right training, I think is imperative. And, and perhaps as we begin to take this over, it introduces new training that we need to do. And so as long as we have an opportunity to do what we right now know is prudent, and then we have the ability to be flexible enough to do additional training, I'm satisfied that it meets that mitigation for the risk that I need.
Commissioner Woodin?
Thank you, Chair. You and Al both alluded to this in your presentation, and I just kind of want to really hone in on the context and the, the impetus for this consideration. As I understand it, there were a number of incidences, particularly over the last couple of years, of animal cruelty, that unfortunately were not able to be prosecuted or responded to in an adequate way, largely because the ACOs were unable to collect evidence to properly hold those, those offenders accountable. Is that a correct, is that a correct understanding, or am I a little bit off?
I'm, I'm glancing back in the back of the room with Prosecutor Becker. You know, there's always a gap between what the citizen believes the outcome should be, right? Somebody who's reading this story on Facebook, or perhaps he's part of it on TV, they think they have a good concept of what's happened. And the reality is, some of the case facts aren't accurate, and it makes a big difference on what, what indeed happened, and what the outcome is in the criminal justice system. I, I think the reality is, there have been some instances where a case could have been better, would have been better, had a law enforcement officer been on scene and guided through the process. It's technical. You aren't able to just waltz into a system and understand the components that you need to collect without the training, of course, right? So I think there's definitely cases that would have been better. I also think that the knowledge that a law enforcement agency processed this case is more comforting to the community to believe that if there had been criminal charges there, we would have charged it, just like we do in every other circumstance. And that we didn't send, didn't send people not prepared to handle it in the, in the, with the gravity that it needed to be handled. So, does that answer your question?
It does. And, you know, by creating the ordinance alongside this, this organizational shift, we also empower us to have measured and appropriate responses to the case itself. Because without that, you're just, you only have the criminal powers.
Right, exactly. So the range, and we do it right now, today, the sheriff's office does have the authority to enforce many of the animal control ordinances at the townships and cities. So we already have that, but it's just not, it's not across the board. So it's not every community, and the, there's vast differences. So it's important to know that if we were wanting to go forward and write citations and numerous numbers, we would already be able to do that. That's not how we are. I, I believe the biggest purpose of a citation across the board, whether it's traffic, or animal control, or anything else we cite, is education. It's to, to make the case of, you can't do this, and here's why. And it's a safety issue, or it might be, it might be the welfare of the people around you, exa, you know, et cetera, et cetera. But a criminal process is because this is now gone beyond just educating you. There have to be consequences, whether financial or others, to move forward on this, to prevent this act from happening again. So that's part of our training, too, is for that animal control, animal control officer to understand the gravity of impact when you take legal action against somebody, and to make sure that that's warranted and prudent, and the right act at the right time.
The, that leads to my, my, a follow-up question, if I'm allowed?
Yes.
Thank you. So you mentioned the other municipalities, and especially the fact that nearly half of these calls come from Grand Rapids and Wyoming. I, I just did a quick search myself, and it looks like Grand Rapids, Wyoming. And I also looked, and our next large city, Kent, would all have their own animal control ordinance in place. So and if that's the instance, would the sheriff no longer, would you not, would the ACOs not be able to respond to those incidences?
No, I mean, we would still respond. We would respond. And I think, I'm going to let Linda talk through the ordinance stuff, and then if you have any further questions about how we're going to imply it, then I'll step back up and talk then.
Sounds good. If, if, then if that's the case, I just had one final question regarding the kind of management of the ACOs as they've been shifted. Now that you've mentioned that non-lethal weapons, like tasers may be equipped, or, or the ACOs will be equipped with those, I guess I, just to share a little concern, I, I, if we're, if our plan is to shift ACOs who are currently at the Health Department over to the Sheriff's Department, even if those folks are properly trained, I just, I, I worry that, given that that was never something that they envisioned in their job description, could that training be less effective and more prone to accident or misuse of the equipment? And if that's the case, is it worth, is it worth knowing at least what kind of equipment the ACOs currently have for animal safety purposes? Do they carry bear spray or something like that? And understanding the rationale why the taser was, is being considered?
Oh, there's a lot of parts to that question. So we have been doing a great deal of analysis, conversation with ACO staff, the supervision. It's our belief that this is something the ACOs do want, that this isn't something we're forcing on any ACOs. I, I don't think it would be prudent to require somebody who did not want to carry a taser, to carry a taser. So we will not require somebody to carry a taser who doesn't want to. And again, the focus of that training will not, they at no point ever will affect an arrest. That is not in their job description. So as you look at an officer, and where that is on the force continuum for us having to take control, and in some cases custody of a person, this would not be the same use of it. And again, it would be a defensive tactic only, just another tool on their tool belt. So I hope that adds to your comfort that we're not requiring somebody to transition into a role that they don't otherwise want. However, there are a number of ACOs that do feel that an additional tool would help them feel more safe as they're approaching their job. Again, coaching, supervision's really important, even in the application, because there are other things, other techniques, that we can teach them to be more aware, which then creates a safety through distance. Don't, you don't have to go into a circumstance where you don't feel comfortable. Just call your supervisor, and your supervisor will come, either come with you, do it instead of you, or help guide you through better techniques to do it. And so I think that's, again, another reason why supervisors in the field imperative to have the staff feel comfortable to do what they want to do. And I lost the second part of your question in that answer.
To be honest, I think I lost it, too.
Well, good.
I guess, you know, if anything, given that their, their, their focus is, is defense first, I almost wonder if it is better to, to start the shift with the concept that if you are feeling unsafe, just to get out of that, that location, and call your supervisor. And after that process, then consider whether or not non-lethal equipment is, is important. You know, it just, it's a, it's another detail in the equation that just, I think, gives me a little more pause. But I certainly appreciate the comments that you've provided.
So de-escalation training really has that as a very big component of it. Is this a circumstance that you need to force the engagement? And that's part of the decision matrix that we train all officers on, especially ACO officers. That's why it's been identified as a significant portion of the training that ACOs need before they really can start under the sheriff's office. That, that whole negotiation of what has to happen here, what circumstance, do I need to be there at the end of this? Do I need to do an action right now? Can I retreat and call for assistance? That kind of thing. So all of that will be, will be a conversation, a training, a, a coaching, a mentoring, you know, it's a process. It's why it takes me six months to have a deputy ready to be on the roster all by themselves. This is not easy stuff to train. It takes practice, and, and it takes oversight.
Alright, yes, Commissioner Milkout.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair, for providing this information. This actually was helpful, because I guess I didn't realize that we were talking about, you know, the animal shelter being separate and reporting to the administrator's office, and the animal control reporting to the sheriff's office. So that's actually very informative information, which will help guide my decision moving forward. But, and just looking at the list of, like, calls that came through over the last year or so, it looks like it's a pretty almost equal, you know, things that could be considered civil versus things that could be considered, considered criminal. And so that, I guess, gives me pause in terms of how this new model might impact how these calls are answered. So would an animal control officer only respond to a call that is, you know, cruelty, or, obviously, you know, I'm assuming that an officer would also accompany the ACO if they were responding to an attack or something like that. But to some of these calls that seem more civil, would there also be a, a sheriff's officer responding to those?
So the devil's always in the detail, right?
Yeah.
So what we know when the call comes in has a big impact on how the call is dispatched. I should have mentioned, a number of years ago, I want to say like four years ago, the dispatch of animal control switched over to the Kent County Sheriff's Office, and they are currently dispatched by our department right now. They've also been moved largely to our computer system, our CAD, and our radio system with that move. That's gone quite well, and really has had a significant impact on understanding the gravity of a call when it comes in. There's an art to collecting enough information to know what the right resource with the right priority level, with the right backup, is to deploy to a call. I don't think you're going to see a big difference in how calls are dispatched because of this change, because that change really happened a number of years ago, when we transitioned to the dispatch under the sheriff's office. That being said, I do believe that there are a number of calls that it would improve our service and the safety if we augmented the animal control officer response with that law enforcement supervisor, or perhaps in the event, they're not available, a law enforcement officer. Even if it's only the initial contact that we get that assessment, where what's going on here, and, and what can we do to help? If it looks like it's not a law enforcement call at all, then they would leave and go on with their business, and it would continue on the civil process. But if, if the call type is almost always criminal, cruelty to animal would be the example I would use. It's not emergent in that there's a human being's safety at risk, but most of the time, the outcome of a cruelty to animal charge would be criminal. I would start with what the most likely outcome would be, and then retreat back to, oh, it wasn't really cruelty to animals, but, you know, they need some additional resources to properly care for this animal. We can always then move to the right direction, and officers do that all day, every day. If, if we actually charge the number of very serious criminal cases that we get called to, it would bring the justice system to the knees. Most cases don't end up to be as serious as they seemed when we got the call. Some, on the other hand, are much more serious than they seemed when we got the call. So we do, that's how we manage our responses. But does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. I guess I'm just looking at it, I guess, in terms of, you know, an equity lens, and just making sure that, you know, because we know a lot of these calls, as you already mentioned, come from the cities. And I would just hate to see there be some disparate sort of responses based on where the calls are coming from, and things being criminalized, that wouldn't other bodies be criminalized, depending on where the, what zip code they're responding to. Like, that's, I, I, I know that you have a commitment to, you know, inclusion and diversity and equity, but I just am concerned that things might look differently depending on where the response is with the transition.
I understand your concern. That's the reason, again, de-escalation, implicit bias, before we begin service under the umbrella of the sheriff's office. And our supervisors manage those issues on a daily basis. They're prepared for that. That being said, that specific concern will be relayed to that staff, and, and as we grow to understand the body of work that we haven't taken on, you know, perhaps additional strategies will develop to even, improve even more.
Yeah, I appreciate that response. I just, I just had to speak on it, I guess, because that was one of the main things I had concerns about the switch. But I actually think the control, the animal control part of it, it makes total sense to be under the sheriff's office. I just would like to just make sure that I can respond to my constituents and, and let them know that they're, that you're prioritizing, you know, the, the responses, and making sure that they're equitable across the community. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I understand.
Thank you, Chair.
Yep, yeah. Go ahead, Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Chair. And this came to mind as you were sharing this. To my knowledge, the current, the ACOs under the current arrangement are not receiving implicit bias training, correct?
I can answer that.
Adam was here, but it looks like he's stepped out.
I don't know that answer.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll receive it every year, if they're under the sheriff's office.
Thank you. Commissioner Legren.
I, thank you, Sheriff. I just want to make sure I'm understanding. The, the three sworn officers that would be supervising, they would be law enforcement, they would be, right, okay. And the ACOs are the civilian officers. And what is your idea of what a healthy number of ACOs is? I realize that, you know, you're coming from a different perspective, and I don't know if it's going to be the same as what we currently have.
We're going to start with what we have.
Okay.
And again, you know, as we're adding resources to it, there, there will be a number of ways that the full-time officers added to this equation will help divide up the calls for service and assist. I'm a little bit concerned that they are understaffed, though. I don't want to say that until we've really had an op, an opportunity to optimize the work. I don't want to say that until we've really had an opportunity to optimize the work. Administratively, I think there's some progress that we might be able to assist with to get more available time for responses out of the workday. But when it comes down to it, just like any other public safety issue, it's largely caused by people, and especially people with pets for animal control. And as those numbers grow in our community, and they have grown in our community, we've literally grown the size of an entire city population in the last census. It's important to understand, these are the kinds of things that are affected and will be affected. And so there will be a time that we likely will have to add resources for the ACO group. And turnover is impacting everybody. It's impacting my staff over and over again. It's also impacting their staff. And every time you turn over people who have a technical expertise, you lose time of doing the work. So if that continues to be a normal thing that we're seeing, then you may want to add resources to have standby resources available when operational-level staff continue to turn over, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. And then I guess my other question maybe should wait until we talk about the ordinance, but I'm just wondering, given your perspective from enforcing law in the entire county, how it might be received if we're doing a county-wide ordinance versus the city by township?
So I did have an opportunity to talk to the Township Supervisor Group that met May 9th. So they meet on a very regular basis, very positive conversation about it. And again, I think most places, if they do have something in an ordinance, it's very similar to what others have in an ordinance. Nobody is really out of the box on something dramatic because there already is the criminal offenses that are part of the state. So I don't think it really matters a lot in what the recipient of a citation would receive. It matters a little bit in the administrative process for us and what mechanism we have to go through, what court we have to show up to, and what prosecutor's office would have to manage if it were handled in a different way. So we want to try to assimilate that to the largest extent possible, but if there is a significant outlier, we always do have the city option or the township option.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And again, I just really want to emphasize, we're going to continue to manage these cases with a civil transaction if we can. That's always our first preference.
Okay, good. So anything else, or should we turn this over to Linda? All right, thank you.
Morning. I think what you've heard from Al and from the sheriff really is that from the legal impact on our residents, there's not a huge change. What we're doing is we're taking the rules that were in place under the Health Department, taking them out of the Health Department, putting them back into an ordinance form. But really, there's not a tremendous amount of change in what the regulations would be. It literally is just what the form is so that the Health Department can exit the enforcement of all these animal control issues, and we can place it with the sheriff's office and the ACOs. I've given all the commissioners here a packet which includes the draft of two different ordinances. One is the animal control ordinance and one is the civil infraction ordinance that you heard Al mention. They come as a package because the civil infraction ordinance allows us to handle these as citations and tickets and keep them out of the criminal justice system altogether. The civil infraction ordinance can be used in many different ways, so you'll see it's very, very generic. But if the board were to want to deal with civil infractions for restaurant inspections, or for parks violations, or anything else, it's then, that framework is set up, and then it's up to the board if they wanted to use that framework for any of these other purposes. So when you read through the draft on the civil infraction ordinance, you're going to see it is very basic, doesn't actually mention animal control all that much. But when we get to the whole process, because this is a multi-step process, you're going to have an animal control ordinance, you're going to have a civil infraction ordinance, you're going to have a fine and cost schedule, and all of that goes through the board. So it's all in this room for you to consider and to impact in that context. But very briefly, at a very high level, because I know that what I do for a living bores the tar out of most people. So a quick overview on our animal control ordinance.
I don't think that's true, Linda.
I said most. I did say most. What we did, like I said, was we took the existing animal control Health Department regs, lifted them out, put them into an ordinance form. We also added some language in the proposed ordinance so that if state law changes, your ordinance will continue to stay up to date with state law, and you won't be faced with a situation where your ordinance is inconsistent with state law. We also took out some internal conflicting provisions that just happened over the years. So now you've got a set of regulations for the ACOs and, if necessary, for the sworn law enforcement officers and the prosecutor to look at that are hopefully consistent from page one to the end. They are drafted to try and give our animal professionals as much flexibility as possible so that they can take into account the situation they're confronted with and not overcharge, not undercharge, but deal with our residents in the best way forward. As the sheriff said, most of the time, these interactions are about education. And between the way it's written to give that flexibility, the combo pack with the municipal civil infraction ordinance, it gives them the chance to talk to a dog owner and say, you can't let your dog run through the neighborhood day after day after day. We're getting calls. Get them to try and correct it based on an initial indication. And then if that doesn't work through the civil infraction, they can get a citation. They have options under the citation to just pay it, pay it with an explanation, or to ask for hearings if they don't think they did anything wrong. So there's steps available to each of our residents on how a situation can be handled. It doesn't jump straight to the nuclear option. The only time we would see something like that is if you were dealing with something truly horrendous, a massive dog fighting ring or something like that, in which case you're dealing with law enforcement and the prosecutor's office. And that's under the Michigan Criminal Code, not under this ordinance. But that's what's already there. So I gave everybody a draft. I'd encourage you to take a look at it. It's good for insomnia. But if you've got questions, feel free to reach out. But what we do have in the ordinance is it deals with the animal shelter and impounding lost or stray animals. It deals with animal control in a civilian way. It deals with the collection of animals. It deals with dog licensing, kennel licensing, which is slightly different, and it deals with the keeping of animals. So again, you can't let your dog run all over the neighborhood type thing. Also has specific obligations. If a dog bites somebody, there is an obligation to report it, whether you're the dog owner, or a groomer, or somebody that knows this dog bit. You have an obligation to report it so that then the Health Department can follow up if need be, but the dog can be contained for the 10-day rabies quarantine to make sure nobody gets sick. But that, again, has always been in the Health Department regulations, but it is in our new ordinance draft. The ACO authority stays the same as the sheriff just led us through. It's civilian in nature. And then, again, with the combination on the municipal civil infraction, you start out with a citation and work your way up only and if and only when needed. You don't start at the very top. However, if you're that person that has ACOs coming out repetitively, the second ticket's going to be more expensive than the first, because the whole idea is to educate and get that behavior changed. I can walk through the ordinance page by page, but I can guarantee people would be sleeping. But that's basically what we're dealing with in two ordinances. The other pieces, we've got some cleanup pieces to deal with, a couple of things in HR, a couple of things in the parks ordinance that all refer to our animal control regs as they stand. So we've got a list of cleanups to do on that. Other than that, I'm more than willing to answer any questions.
Let's see if there are any questions. Obviously, once you get through the details of reading this, if there are detailed questions upon reading it, then reach out to Linda.
Absolutely.
And we'll see if we can get those answered. Yes?
Thank you, Chair. I think next time I go to the vet with my dog, I am going to ask my vet if they've ever prescribed alcohol to a dog or an animal, because that is in here.
It is.
So I thought that was very interesting in here.
Well, unfortunately, a lot of these things come through, things that we learned through other people's bad behavior in the past.
So one other quick question. I'm sorry, on a serious note. Do we need to address any dog parks at all or anything? I know they're becoming more popular in different communities. Are there any things within the ordinance that need to be addressed in that, or are we good with that?
We did not specifically call outdoor dog parks in the ordinance. A dog park, depending on its jurisdiction, is going to have its own rules about what the owner or the caretaker's obligations are while using that dog park. So if there's a problem within the dog park, it would initially fall to that jurisdiction's rules. If there's a problem where you've got a massive, in essence, dog fight going on, I'm sure our ACOs would be there to assist.
Okay.
But as long as confined within the dog park, it should fall to the jurisdiction of the dog park.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Legren.
I guess just another jurisdiction question. The part about licensing says that either the county or a municipality licenses a dog. I thought the county licensed all dogs. Is this...
There have been some partnerships between the treasurer's office and local municipalities to make it more convenient for the residents.
Oh, okay.
But that's generally how that happens. So a lot of the smaller jurisdictions will have licenses available through their office so somebody doesn't have to drive downtown.
I got you. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. A few questions. First and foremost, could you, I may have been filling up my water bottle when you were explaining this, but in the instances in those municipalities that have their own ordinance, the ACOs can still respond to those, and they'll just monitor that criteria over this one?
The way the state law is worded, the county ordinance does not affect where there is a local animal control ordinance. Please note, that's not a zoning ordinance. Most of our communities have separate zoning ordinances that say you can only have so many dogs. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about a standalone animal control ordinance. But having looked through all of the jurisdictions in the county, the vast bulk of those local ordinances actually say that they are to be enforced by either one of their individuals, or they've delegated it to the Kent County Sheriff. So working with the sheriff, we'll talk to those locals and figure out the best way to make this work. It's something that will develop and get cemented over time. But we're working on a list and actually a map for all of our folks so that they know exactly wherever they are, whether they're a county ordinance or local ordinance for the time being.
I've got two more questions, if that's okay, Chair Stack.
You only get one.
Okay.
No, you can have two.
Well, thank you, sir. My second question, you know, one of the concerns that came out of this proposal is the fact that since the sheriff's department is a, or since the county sheriff is a constitutional officer, our relationship with the sheriff can be, at times, from a legal perspective, semi-permeable, where we can grant authority, but we can't remove authority, or we can't direct how to use that authority. And under this, since this is not one of the constitutional responsibilities of the sheriff, let's say we pass the ordinance, we approve the funding, the organizational shift occurs in a few years from now, either we realize that this is just not working out, or, you know, there is a, potentially a different sheriff, not suggesting that's going to happen, but we have to plan for the future, that has a different mindset, and we realize there are issues with that. We can legally take this authority back, correct?
At that point, there are a number of different things the board could do. It's your ordinance. You could start by amending the ordinance if you wanted to. And then you could have any number of discussions with the sheriff at that point about what's happening, how it's getting funded, and what the expectations are.
Thank you. And then, lastly, one particular issue that's been brought to my attention frequently by a constituent when it comes to animal neglecting cruelty has been about animals being kept outside in freezing temperatures and then succumbing to frostbite. And I remember the last time I had a constituent concerned about this, drawing from our animal control, our animal health regulation that talks about dangerous surroundings, and no condition shall be maintained or permitted that is or could be injurious to the animal. And I see that that's here in the draft ordinance. I wonder if a more explicit criteria around keeping animals in sub-freezing temperatures would be appropriate. I don't know how to word it, but just given the fact that that alone does not seem to be sufficient to respond to such cases. I know that our state law has similar language put in place for these instances. I wonder if we could borrow some of that language, put it into an ordinance to give a more explicit power to ACOs in those instances.
We absolutely can look at it. The challenge with writing something like that is that obviously a chihuahua reacts differently to cold temperatures than a husky. And I'm not an expert in what dogs both can tolerate and enjoy.
I'm allergic to all of them, so it's...
And so that's one reason why we tried to write this in such a way, to give flexibility to the animal professionals that we have here in the county, our ACOs, so that they can evaluate the situation and look at it and say, well, this is a husky. He loves it outside, but he does have shelter from the wind, or the, you know, if it were raining or something like that, versus, this is a chihuahua, and it's got to be indoors.
Yeah.
So it's a balancing act between giving the flexibility to the really learned professionals on our staff versus trying to micromanage them through an ordinance that in turn might be a hindrance to them working with an owner to see what's good for that particular situation.
But that's a known phenomenon, as I understand it. So we can certainly see how other ordinances have...
Absolutely. That's why it's still a draft.
Yep. Let's see. Commissioner McCall, did you have something?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. So are the fines that are listed here in the proposed ordinance, those are just carryover from what was in the Health Department?
They're carryover, and they are based on state statute with regard to what's available under municipal civil infraction.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else for Linda? If not, read it at your leisure and see if there's any follow-up questions for her. All right. You had one comment with respect to Commissioner Wooden.
I was just going to mention that from the previous presentation, the board did take the animal control from the sheriff in 1978 because there was state revenue available to fund it through the Health Department and the health code that wasn't available through the method that was being used at the time. So I just wanted to point out...
So there is precedent.
That very same circumstance did come up in the past, so...
Somehow you voided questions, Al. That's kind of interesting. Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that our intent would be to put body cams on ACOs, starting with when they joined the department, too.
Okay, which they don't have now.
So, yeah, I guess, are there any more questions? I know that's a lot to...
Yes.
Oh, Carol, yeah.
The prosecutor.
It's the price of being here, Chris. This is what...
In terms of, the one question we had was, I can't say we've had a case where we haven't been able to do it because of the ACOs. What it has been is we're behind the eight ball. We're behind. And you guys get a lot of the emails or the text messages, too, in terms of, oh, there's a picture of this animal out there that's, you know, out in the cold or whatever it may be. And then all of a sudden, we find, I found out, and a lot of those times, we've had ACOs out there and essentially kind of going with the sheriff. They're not trained. They talk to the complainant, and they talk to the person with the dog. And they're like, okay, there's nothing really going on here. And they forgot to interview the three other people who may have had the video that we could have used to prosecute the case. And all of a sudden, we're dealing with trying to put out a fire that maybe wouldn't have put out if we had done the investigation upfront from the beginning. So I think that's the biggest issue that I'm seeing. And I think it's a benefit to have the sheriff, you know, do this, that, you know, they can be trained in terms of, okay, who do you need to talk to? I mean, right now, any evidentiary procedure is grab a cell phone, take a look at the cell phone. Is there anything on cell phones, which ACOs just don't do, but just about every deputy right now knows that we probably should do as part of an investigation. So I think it'll help tremendously in terms of hopefully calming down situations where there's videos out there. It seems like we're not doing anything, and we can nip those in the bud, if you will. I haven't seen that. I'd like to see the civil infraction stuff, though, if you can get a copy to me, because I don't know how that's going to impact our office in terms of cases if it gets to us, because we, you know, we'll do speeding tickets. If somebody raises a speeding ticket, we may have to represent. So we don't do a whole lot of those now, but just purely from the criminal, I think it'll be beneficial.
Certainly. All right. Did you have follow-up?
No, I actually have another one. And I think I know the answer. I have two more. No, the answer. Are there any certifications or accreditation standards?
For ACOs?
For animal control... For, for animal control in general?
Angela here, who's the director.
Yes. Good morning, Angela.
Uh, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Angela Hollinson, and I'm the new Animal Shelter Director, uh, and I'm almost coming into one year of employment here at Kent County, and everybody's been very welcoming, so thank you for that. Animal control officers are required by the Department of Agriculture to receive at least 100 hours of training before they can act in an animal control capacity. And a lot of that incudes, uh, includes student cardiac diseases, animal handling. There's a lot of specific items in that training that really helps support their day-to-day as animal control. And one of the really unique things about what we're doing here today is there's a really clear link between those who commit animal violence and those who commit violence against humans. And being able to send our ACOs out and have that ability to have the Sheriff's Department backing them at all times is really helpful for all the processes. Oftentimes, our animal control officers will go to a call for animal abuse and find themselves in the middle of a domestic dispute and not even understand what they're getting into because they don't have that specific training available to them. Um, and we see a lot of domestic victims who go back to the abusers specifically because they do not want to leave their pets in the home. So allowing that training from the Sheriff's Department to pass through to our animal control officers allows them to really be more effective on the human and animal side of the issues. Um, and it really creates a really effective, one of the most effective teams, in my opinion, to help deal with the human aspect and the animal aspect of these types of calls.
As we change the animal control officers to the Sheriff's Department, is there any change in benefits, pay raise, pay scales? Are there any other ancillary type changes that'll come about?
None that...
No, I mean, that, all that would stay the same. Uh, there would be additional training cost, and there would be, uh, with the change, would be providing new vehicles, uh, uniforms, that kind of costs for the three new positions that are being added. Uh, so incidental, but no.
But the ACOs would have the same compensation.
It'll basically just...
Right.
Be a simple transfer. They're all, they're county employees, they'll still be county employees.
Right.
Okay.
Follow the general.
Okay, yes. Commissioner McCow.
Thank you, Chair. I just have one question, I guess in terms of costs, so it's probably, might be Al. Um, so looking at the proposed animal control department modification costs, I'm just trying to understand, um, what the current cost structure of the, the, it all being under one is versus what the proposed for 22 and 23 is. So I didn't see that slide in here in terms of what the current cost for the...
Yeah, we had that in the memo I sent out, but we don't have that in this packet. I, I talked in terms of net increase.
Yeah.
I don't think it had everything that the other chart had that I sent out with the memo. So yeah, so I mean, a- as I mentioned, there's a lot of moving parts because we're moving over $500,000 in operations costs from the, from the Health Department to the Sheriff's Office budget. And then you have the increases in equipment and in vehicles where the big shot happens this year, and then there's a smaller amount of cost to maintain those things in ensuing years. And it looks like Jeff came up and he's got a chart in his hand, so...
He always have a chart, right?
I'll turn it right over to you.
So the budget for all of animal shelter in '21, the amended budget was 2.7 million. Um, so the piece that we'll be moving is about 741,000 annually for just the ACO piece. Um, so the remaining cost of about 1.9 million will stay with the animal shelter, if that makes sense. And then the future budgets obviously will be determined as we develop the budgets, but those are, those are what are in place right now.
Okay, that's helpful. I was look, pulling up the reorganization document that you had sent out, and I didn't see the budget. I saw this kind of, um, mandated and discretionary services, but maybe I'm looking at the wrong one, so thank you.
Okay. Again, if you have more follow-up, I'm sure Jeff can get that information for you. All right. Any other, yes, Commissioner O'Grann.
Uh, just a brief comment, which is that it really sounds to me like an animal control officer will feel a lot more confident if they have all of this training going out, and that really seems to me like a good idea.
All right. Any, yes, Commissioner Anderson.
Not to belabor this, but I really appreciate this work session. I really appreciate, um, the Q and As and then the slideshow. This is, and, and the, the wonderful staff members that we've had to describe this, um, ordinance and the process, you know, to, to describe it to us, I think this has been very valuable, and I really appreciate it. When we looked at it, it's just simply a, a budget request. It was like, holy cow, what are we doing here? But, you know, but I am, now to be silly, I, again, I, but I'm glad we've had a chance to sniff out this program.
And now the meeting's going to the dogs.
Well, um, it, you know, it's, it's interesting. I, I talked to Al a little bit about, you know, what's the, what's the prevalence of this in our community, and you put some numbers in here, but I, I went back and checked. Uh, Kent County has almost 250,000 households, and so if 60% is the number, you're talking about close to 150,000 dogs in a single dog household. Those of us that have been out campaigning think that number is low, by the way. And, uh, and that 20% have multiple dogs, so more than 150,000 dogs in Kent County, um, that's a lot of animals to have to monitor. Um, so the, the size and the magnitude of this in our community is significant. Anyway, with that, any other comments or questions? Appreciate your engagement. I do have to open it up for public comment. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to address the work session, you may do so now. Please identify yourself by name, address, and you have up to three minutes. And I see no one. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.